So. We have.
Yep.
All right. So. I don't know what's happened, but we need. Two additions. To ordinance. Eighteen twenty-three, which is what Amy?
Eighteen twenty-three is the part-time income tax administrator that they're, they were adding. Time income tax administrator and hourly rate.
That can take three readings.
Just one Sherry talked about last week.
Yes.
Her last reading.
Yeah, there's some. I don't know what happened. And then nineteen twenty-three's appropriations.
Yeah.
That she has for, I think it goes toward the Warsaw project. She has that she's doing it right now that she will need passed tonight. So. I guess. You guys have to understand with these ordinance and things. Understand your job's the most important job to you. But some of us work full-time jobs as well. So when we get these things. Couple hours before the meeting starts. And when I'm done. It's not like we sit around and we don't have anything to do. So. We need to make sure.
Yeah.
That.
If you're gonna scold or score.
No, I just. I'm just saying, you know, we come in and flirt. I don't mind it. You know, like Max has called me before and if it's a week or so. And mistakes happen. Mistakes happen. I get that. But I'm asking. Everyone here, don't get frustrated with us if we can't get them on because we all, most of us work full-time jobs. I just wanted, please, everybody understand that. It's, it gets busy for us as well. So we got, we need to add those on additions. What was, what was nineteen twenty-three, Sherry?
I didn't hear your beginning comments, but I'm just gonna apologize.
I know you already did.
Cause I had requested appropriations last week and if I failed.
What is this?
If I failed to get it to Amy, I'm sorry, along with the income tax. This is the appropriations that I requested for three hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars for the water Warsaw engineering. The additional that we need to have for that for the.
For K drive?
Yes. And if I, you know, I haven't had a chance, you said it was not my email, I apologize, but I addressed it at the council meeting, my two items, part-time income tax and that. So. If there was a lack of communication, I sincerely apologize. And the income tax, I stressed earlier, you don't have to add it today, we have time. It can come on in two weeks, it's, that's fine, you don't have to add that one tonight.
We're gonna add it.
Appropriation, that's nineteen.
That's nineteen appropriations is nineteen.
Yep, okay, got it. And I made everybody a copy of it, cause I knew you didn't have your, your stuff here.
It was nineteen to one, wasn't really enough on there, you said you could shuffle around, like, make it work.
No, that was with one other thing, we can't, we can't with, we can't, I don't have three hundred and thirty thousand to spare.
Just to shuffle?
Just to shuffle. If you guys ever need to get ahold of me, you can call my cell phone, I usually have a cell phone at school, I may not have it right on me. But it's on my. So you can always catch me at school, I don't have my iPad with me all the time. Sometimes I'll take it just to double check at lunchtime, see what's happening. But I don't have it with me all the time.
So ordinance twelve twenty-three. Under additions. Well, I need that on table, so when I read that one, that's the luxury tax. It's at the third reading. We're on table it, and when we bring it back at the second reading in May, we'll untable it. And then it will be for. July one, right Sherry, it's when it will take effect, okay? And that was for.
It's the lodging tax where that we're modifying it to where they can, people that have on average, I think we said fifty dollars a month that they pay, that they can own, they'd only have to file with me quarterly.
Quarterly, yeah.
Versus every month.
And it's gonna.
And then we've come across some other language that we feel like we wanna discuss and see if it needs, should be added to it also.
Okay. All right. Nineteen twenty-three, I think I said will need passed. The others that are at the second reading. Are fifteen twenty-three, sixteen twenty-three, and seventeen twenty-three. Those need passed tonight. So we suspend the rules and go to the third reading. Chad, you're pretty good at that, so.
Okay.
So. Max, one thing I need to ask you about, you sent an email and I wasn't sure what you meant by, do we need? An ordinance? To advertise the sidewalks projects in Roscoe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that ordinance given me the, the sign off of whoever wins the bid. Yep.
Cause you said the funding secured, right?
Yeah, well, the funding secured, what we was waiting on was that high historical, and we just got that last week, the letter from that lady that.
Okay.
That's what we've been waiting on.
Is that part of the sixty thousand or so out of the capital budget?
Yep. And what I did here, Sherry, is that is reimbursable, so. And they, they can take up the ninety days.
It was in the capital budget, so.
It was actually in the state capital, but.
Yeah, I think it's.
How was that money to SVP while we're on our behalf again?
Okay, is there a sample ordinance that Amy can go off of?
Yeah, sure, we can. So like any contract. It's just been, since it's over fifty thousand. They'll have to be advertised for. You know, probably two or three times in the paper and so many days and.
And that can take its course?
Yeah.
Once we get it on there, it can take its course? Good. Sherry, you have anything for the next meeting?
Actually, no, not that I'm aware of, and just so I know. Remind, I will not be at the next meeting, I will be out of state, so, but I shouldn't, if I do, I'll get it to Amy, but it shouldn't be anything.
Okay. Level ordinance, Max, you have here the. Street excavations and curb cuts, set for you or is there effort, Mr. Shire?
That was a team effort writing it, but I thought the ordinance committee could have it tonight, Mel, they can review it, if they have any questions. And we can put it on the next. Council meeting, yeah, if there is any questions. There's what's in red, and Molly's, Skelton reviewed this as well. What's in red is some changes, the main, the main thing is, is. Requiring a permit, so that we know when somebody's cutting our streets.
Max, I made a few more changes after I got through, after I emailed last week, I made a few more changes today.
The ones that. Andrew sent me those this morning as the final, correct?
No, I made changes in addition to that.
Oh, well. Okay.
Really why we wanna do it is, so when someone patches a road, it doesn't sink, and then we have to patch it. Because the outside companies don't call the contractor who was in charge, they call us.
That's what we talked about.
So that's why we wanna, we want to try to prevent that, or going back to, to fixing a road again after it's been fixed.
So is there a defined period of time for that?
Question, I didn't see.
So Kevin, is this what you want, have you looked at it? This, this is what you want? So any dips in the chuck holes, we can get ahold of you instead of the mayor?
Like Tom's question, though, is there a timeframe where they have to have repaired their? I mean, it, it, so it's. As far as like. They're done, or?
It just, a lot of it, with, with Columbia Gas, what we've been running into is. They get a certain amount of holes. Right, they wanna get them all, and that's where you're kinda at their mercy, I mean, you can say. That, hey, we want it done in this amount of time, but I think just working with. People digging in the roads and knowing who's digging in the roads is going to help us, I, I, you can put a time on it, whether that happens or not, I mean.
I guess that wasn't really my question, my question was, once they repair it, is there a certain amount of time a year, is that in here?
Yes, it's.
Okay.
Good.
But you bring up a good question. Of how long do they have?
K on that is one year.
And that, that's.
Okay, I see it there.
It's gonna get a little wonky depending on the time of year it is.
Right, that's another.
They're making temporary repairs because they don't have the hot mix, which we still, which we still don't.
Some of those areas have stayed unrepaired for four or five months.
Yep. A lot of those are gas holes, and Chad's absolutely right, what they do, they wait till they get them.
Right, they get a bunch of holes and then.
The one that always I come back to, it's a prime example, this is where they put new sewer line in on Second Street. Right past, I call it first Chuck's Bay was. Not coming towards the water, playing my role on the second, yeah, it's just like a major problem, if you're getting down that repair, which I made one year ago. And they were actually, I got one down and actually told them how to make the proper repair. And they did not get back and inspect, and obviously they did not compact, and I got what you got, so. That's what we're trying to do that more than anything.
Yeah, I mean, and if, if you're not gonna do the, the excavation work correctly, and you're gonna create work or phone calls for us, we're just gonna make sure you don't dig in the street. That's it, so. That's kinda where we're at.
Some piece of what happened, as you can see, I don't think three dollars to cut a sixteen-inch wide opening on curbs is quite sufficient in today's world, so.
So is this enforceable?
No.
That should be the.
Yeah, right.
It should force it. I can imagine the litigation when I see Columbia Gas and, and what they're gonna say. Didn't they take doing that one time before they finally started following all of it? Yeah, it's enforceable.
We pulled things, Bills, before a meeting that we had to come up to redo all this, that's very similar to what they're using down there. They just asked more people, well, they actually have inspectors.
Right, the whole engineering department, yeah.
At least we will know where they're digging at.
Right. Because right now, they don't even contact you, do they, Kevin, where they're digging?
You'll see another second, that's it.
Right, when I look, when I look.
Why you get your checks sometimes?
Right. So are you gonna be the one in charge of. Making sure these things are repaired correctly, whose, whose job is that gonna be?
Keep in mind for right now, you have Columbia Gas, that you, we get, we get them the ordinance, get it to them, they'll do it by. That comes from.
So who's gonna check it, that's my question.
Be right here.
You got it? Okay. Okay, any other ordinances to be added?
No. Have appropriations ordinance. Early in January, remember we mentioned our jet truck went down for repairs. We're guessing that's gonna come in about forty to forty-five thousand to repair the truck. And we'll have about forty thousand rental fees to keep us going. Put that in perspective, a new truck now is almost seven hundred thousand dollars, so. I'm supposed to have the final repair costs here the next week or so. I'll give you the share once we're ready, yeah, if you don't have, but I wanted to give that title probably on the next agenda. And that's the only one, and what we'll have at the next meeting, Max, the core engineers will be on there as well for the Warsaw project.
Yeah, we had to write, we'll have a, I guess, was it ordinance?
They wanted a new ordinance.
That's right. Remember the ordinance resolution one? Same thing, we've already passed the ordinance.
Slightly different.
Slightly different back.
That's only two I know will be coming up for the next meeting.
So what's one of those trucks cost?
Brand new one's about seven hundred thousand.
I think he's already rented, what, three times?
Yeah.
I mean, it's like thirteen thousand or so.
Thirteen thousand a month, just for a rental. How old's this truck, yeah? It's about ten years, my understanding, about halfway through its life.
Fourteen, one of them.
Thirteen, five, person fourteen, yeah.
Maybe they got it right before it might come around.
Suppose the money's there?
I'll have to look to see where we're at with the budget versus appropriations, and, you know, maybe there's. We can talk to somebody, you know, is it absolutely necessary right at the beginning to do appropriations, or see where you go throughout the, throughout the course of the year? Where your, where your capital improvements to that now, so we can, we can look at that.
But I think it'll be appropriation. It probably something we would take a lot of on to survive any.
Yeah.
Start the streets with it. I doubt if there's much trade in value to it.
Uh, they said our current trade. Like forty thousand dollars.
There you go. I should fire it. That's what one pays.
Yeah.
It's one payment.
He said if it was fixed, it's gonna cost you forty to fix it.
It's an invaluable piece of equipment.
Any other ordinances?
Yes and no, I attended the tree commission meeting the week before our last council meeting. The exciting thing was Ohio Bill's working towards a downtown master plan for new trees for downtown the riverfront and Clary Gardens, as well as Roscoe Village. But the one, the thing I wanted to bring up regarding an ordinance, it sounds like there's already been some discussion about it, was it, I felt like there was a lot of disconnect. Between council and the tree commission, so it was something that I just had down that we should review and discuss to see, and there was also talk about. The Tree City and the role that the tree commission was developed because in order to have a tree city, we had to have the commission. But we're not a tree city right now, they didn't file that paperwork. They want to, to get more grants, and again, a lot of the verbiage, I just felt there was a disconnect, so I just wanna turn that to the table. I haven't really read into it yet.
I've pulled other tree ordinances from other communities around us, and. We definitely need to look at our tree commission ordinance, I think I have Zane's Villes, which I like about the best. Just telling Kaylee about the issue that we had in her neighborhood, there was. So basically, the ordinance right now says the tree commission shall send the letter to the property owner. Then, once the letter was drafted and we sent it to the tree commission, the person on the tree commission basically went up and told the property owners that the city would take care of it for them. Which is not how it works. Tomorrow, there is a tree commission meeting that I will be attending, and. We, as far as the ordinance, the ordinance needs to be amended to show what we actually should be doing, because I do not want to end up. Being the tree police as well at city hall, so I don't, I mean, cause if, if we go up and cut trees down as a city. We set precedence for all over the city, so if you have a neighbor you don't like their tree, and the tree commission says it's gotta come down, well, guess what, then I have to say, okay, let's contract. Because our, our public works is not going to be the tree people in our city, we have other things going on, I'm not going to do that. I think it's, it's horrible precedence to set, and we're not going to do that, so I will get you.
So we're doing a tax prices to them? If we have to take somebody's tree down?
We're just not, we're not in the tree business, so we're not going to. We are most definitely not going to get into that business.
Toward the end of that ordinance, I read when the downtown trees were an issue. What was the part about, it said the mayor, you have to final say so?
I, I guess, and then, you know, that's what I get into, that someone said, I said, they can do this, and. In the last case, I never said anything, so when someone said, I said. Like, okay, so I guess, no, no, and if I did say it, I would own it, you know, so it was kind of. The recent events have created a need to amend that ordinance, because we're not, we're, we're going down a slippery slope of going on people's property. And touching their property, and I like to call that government overreach, and we will not go on people's property, whether it be. Our own people, or I'm not going to hire subcontractors to, to take trees out, that's it. Like, that's as easy as I can make it, I love trees, but it's been, I said this, and, and we need to go to, it, it's fine, if, if, if someone wants to. To be the tree police and they wanna volunteer their time. God bless them, come talk to me.
What's the purpose of the tree commission, so we can have Kershawton and Bloom?
Yeah, it's, uh, well, Tree City USA, I think maybe it was a checkbox.
A roll-off of Kershawton and Bloom, they had to have a tree commission in order to.
The boxes, and other communities all around us, I mean, it's not something that's uncommon.
Right.
I think our ordinance is a little. Expanded compared to other places, and, and I think it could create a huge liability on the city. And it could create something that we don't want to get started.
If there is a tree in Tom's yard that. It's not healthy and could fall on his neighbor's house, how we handle that?
I mean, it's on Tom's property, so it's Tom's, you know.
So when it falls on his neighbor's house, it's probably.
Yes, yeah, and, and that's the way it's always been, you know, and you'd be surprised if the, the volume of calls we get, there's a. There's a tree over, in my neighbor's yard, overhang in my yard, what can I do about it? And my stance has been, it's a civil matter, call a lawyer. Because I don't, it's like anything, you, once you get into that, once you flip it in the door, then we're going to be. Really stepping on people's private property and what they have, to me, if it's, if it's an, and honestly, any tree could fall. At any time.
Any trees we'll deal with then are the ones in the tree law.
Right, correct, so anything on private property, it's on your private property, you need to take care of it, if, if you know it's going to fall. If you know it's a danger, we are not going to be. The chainsaw posse that goes out and tears your trees down, and like I said, if you have a tree, if someone has a tree on their property, they know it needs to come down, it needs to come down. I don't think that a letter from me, a letter from the tree commission, it's, it's assuming liability, if you know about it, then you're assuming liability for it, so. I don't wanna say I don't have time to worry about every single tree in the city, but I don't have time to worry about every tree in the city.
So do we need the ordinance?
But, I mean, that's really entirely up the council, what, Bob, what do you recommend?
Well, if every other city has a tree commission, then I, I don't have a problem having a tree commission. I fought that ordinance when it was passed, because it put liability in the city, and I didn't like it. But it passed, and it's been there. It's never really. Been used. But I like the idea of maybe taking a look at some other cities.
Right.
So all-inclusive.
Right.
And put the onus on the city to cut down trees on people's private property, I don't like that either.
Right.
And I think, if I remember right, for reading that ordinance, that. If I remember right, for reading that ordinance, it, it states that. Tree limbs have to be trimmed a minimum of eight feet above sidewalks and maybe fourteen or sixteen above streets.
Yeah, and public, and public right away.
So none of, that doesn't apply to, to ours because none of our trees on Main Street need that.
Right. And, yeah, and public right away, we can, like, if it's, if it's obstructing a view on a traffic signal, things like that, we. Try to cut them back. We don't try to cut them down. But yeah, I mean, that's a thing. It's too encompassing. Of everything. Yeah.
So that, that needs to be looked at. We're not following the rules.
Right. No, and I'll send out a, I'll send you the one that I like the most. They're all pretty similar. Ours is very expanded, uh, and very overreaching and gives power. To an outside committee that could really set us up for liability on that end as well. So it just needs to be looked at and, and go from there. I'm, I'm definitely not against the tree commission, not against any work they've done. I just, the ordinance is the ordinance. And if we can't follow what that says, we need to do something differently. So.
Okay, nothing trees. Share, you have anything with the other?
No.
Jim, did you have questions? I'm sorry. Sure?
Yeah.
We just need to move on. Housing and property maintenance, I guess, um, also council, we also, uh, the planning and zoning commission met. On the, um, property up on, um, in Roscoe. Uh, how'd that go? I, I, I have a letter for Zachary and Janay Stevens. I think they come to a mutual agreement.
Yes, we're, will be a. A non-permanent. Uh, if they were to sell the property, it would have to come back to zoning. Uh, it passed. It's a variance.
Right.
So it's a variance and it passed and they're running an event center in that neighborhood. And then if they, if it would ever switch ownership, they would have to come back. Whoever bought the property would have to come back and, and have another here.
Just a question. So what would happen if somebody wanted to open up? Little general store up there now?
It would have to come back to what? As far as like not in that property?
No, in that area up there, that's R two.
It would have to come to planning and zoning and we would have to decide and we'd send out notifications and yeah. And I recommend if anyone wants to start a business from my experience in the last six months to a year. Come see us first because that could be, you know, with what happened. You know, the neighbors had a lot of questions because that's basically who owns that process. If they show up and say, we don't want this. It, it really, that's why we suggest coming here first, but a lot of times people are coming here last.
Come here, yeah, after it's already.
Yeah, and then they're putting money into a business that they could quite possibly. Not start. And we don't want to, to stifle business openings or startups, but you. There are rules within the city and you need to follow them. And we're probably the best place to start. Uh, here and with, with Mideast, uh, asking a questions on commercial properties, so.
Good. So you will see an ordinance. Next meeting likely approving what the zoning and planning commission recommends.
I thought it was, is it just a verbal though? Because.
That's what I was wondering.
Beaumont sent, Beaumont sent them, but he said, Bob sent you the information, didn't it? Yeah.
I'll have to read, I think.
How the one come out on? Five forty-one east. I was working on cars.
It was denied.
It was denied. Dave, you have anything to add? Kay Dry?
Um, I sent everybody the, uh, must report. Any questions there?
What was it?
Included a copy. We got a copy of like the quarterly, how much recyclables were collected in that report from the trade company. I also, uh, had one of the staff do that. I was curious of how we collect our money in the billing. You saw, we get about a quarter. From the credit cards, you know, electronic funds and about sixty percent still coming through the office. When you see the term HCH, that's just checks we process automatically.
So why is our water fund income going down?
Um, last, last month is we paid the Warsaw design engineering fees out of that. So. That come out of that affected cash flow temporary. We get reimbursed for that. So I'll get, it's kind of minus two plus two.
It came, I had to submit it to OWDA, but we needed to get them paid and the reimbursement actually came in. Today. So.
Right.
That'll be a spike.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll come back up.
It was.
The same way you'll see that, where you see the encumbered funds because like for the water meter project, we've covered seven hundred thousand, three hundred thousand for the engineering. So those will come back off.
Good. Just getting the loan proceeds back in.
Okay.
Or in not back in.
In your project list that you sent out? The way you have them, is that like a priority? I found, or you just gave us a list?
I know, if you look at it, it was like priority, like a high priority.
Okay.
You know?
But it's like, you don't have them like.
Number one, number two, no, they're just kind of highs and lows, you know?
Anybody else have any questions for Dave?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I did, uh, did we get that posted? I haven't checked the website yet. If anyone's listening, if anybody wants to send a letter. Or a note by email. That wants addressed. You cannot, you gotta put your name on it. And your address. And no profanity. And then I will read it at council. Because if it's a legit. Complaint, then address council properly, the way you should. Um, so the one that we got. Was not done very well. So I, I'm not gonna address it. And basically those emails should probably just go to Amy. It should not go to basically anybody else if it's addressed to council. And I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can do that.
As a question that city shocked.
Yeah, it's a question. We're not really sure where it's going. Ryan's trying to figure that.
I think Bob was working on that too. So we'll figure that out.
I mean, I think that just prevents.
Is that posted on the website? The questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like when you go.
So somehow it's, if it's the council, somehow we need to come up with something that just goes to council. That way. A lot of other people don't get a hold of it. Yeah. So I'm sure you get plenty of phone calls in the now. So. Uh, so Kevin, what's, uh? How's, uh, how's, uh? Public utilities going? Okay?
Yeah, going real good.
What the?
Right now, hot mix will be coming this week probably. Waiting on, get my roller back and want to rent one because I already quite done it.
So. Who's responsible for that hole in the ground by the greenhouse? Is that ours? Where we inherited?
Yeah, I think Albert's did that one.
I just saw it with him.
Cause I think, seems like it gets deeper and deeper.
I'd be one, like one of the worst ones will get fixed. I mean, it's settled now, but second pretty much, that's what happens. They just stick it right back filling.
Okay.
We gotta watch what we put in them and get the right depth. LSM works really good. I mean, it's an O dot fix, works perfect by every time. We got several of them, like you said, Second Street. I'll make this down. We'll work on the ones, the one down the rise is the one that guy did it. I told him I'd put the hot mix in it for him because he did it right in the middle of winter, winter time. He's gone. But we will be fixing that for ourselves. But he did LSM right and gee, I'm pretty good. A lot of truck, a lot of truck traffic.
Somebody else have anything for Kevin? Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Yeah. Mayor, does anybody have anything else before we get to the mayor's report?
I don't have that much, so I, uh. You're reading chemical bid tonight and passing that correct because we need to get that, that's advertised, needs advertised. So we need to get that done. Um, I've been working with Kevin on identifying alleys to pave.
Priority list?
Well, I mean, any, like, I mean, that's where you can. Really, you can. Really, my goal is the most used commercial. We have, uh, the alley. Kevin has nicknames for all, all the alleys, so. I don't know where my list is. Okay. Center Street Alley and Roscoe. Plaza Alley, which is behind the Shachtan Tire and between Vine and Pine. Cambridge Road Alley, basically that runs all behind everyone's house, like Cambridge Road. That's called the horse year. Downtown Alley would be behind the art park. And then the Montessori Alley going into. Uh, Montessori and the, and PNC and the city parking lot there. So that's really right now what we've identified. Uh, we will be focused on alleys. Uh, we can't get hot mix soon enough to get. Everything where it needs to be, but those, that's what we're gonna start as of right now.
One behind the church. Tony, you start grind that down.
Yeah, there's all, there's a section in there that needs ground down where the drainage comes off of the apartments. Yeah. It, it'll be ground down there and. Uh, but I mean, we've tried our, our best to put them back together as much as we can. Uh, and it just comes down to funding. I'd love to pave every, every alley in town. It just, it's just not feasible. And we wanna get in each area, but it's kind of, you can start wherever you want because the, the need is there. Still working with the state and federal government, just pursuing funding for the Warsaw project. So. We have money in the, in the biennial budget for the state. Uh, we also have, uh. It's called. Oh, it used, they used to be called earmarks. There's a fancy name for earmarks now and I can't. Uh, community spending program, I think is what it's called now. I'm not, I'm not sure. Uh, either way, we, we've been talking to everyone and, and hopefully, I think everything is submitted. Uh, the feds has to go to committee now. Uh, and the state, I believe everything's in. So what will happen? To our benefit is having the funding request into the state and to the feds. It actually, at the federal level, makes it look more viable. Because if the state helps us fund a little bit, then the feds help us fund, fund a little bit, it makes it. A much more attractive project. So we're in, there's a, an acronym for that. I. I don't know what it is.
So while you're on the water project.
Okay.
I brought this up before. So we're supplying all this water. Wanna go to Warsaw? I saw two. Utilities vehicles in West Lafayette working. So I'm thinking, okay, so. And maybe we do, I don't know. So if there's a water leak up there and one in the city. Do we have enough manpower to cover all that?
Yeah, yeah.
So once we get, um, Warsaw in there, we're gonna have enough manpower to cover all these water lines. No extra, we're not adding any workers or anything?
Now, what's the Warsaw call for? One and a half people, Dave?
Oh, yeah, worse, we'll look back at common question. West Lafayette terms like water breaks. They average maybe one and a half to two a year for my ten years up there. So water breaks is not a big deal. So they were up there.
Yeah, I, I'm not questioning why they're up there.
Yeah, like water breaks, I'd say West Lafayette, one to two breaks a year.
So what happens when we get four or five?
Oh, they can't break at the same time, Tom. I understand that.
Right. We have not quite so much issue as rolling stock equipment. We only have the one jet truck. We, we had triage, just like we have free here in the city. You know, what helps at West Lafayette and Warsaw kind of similar. West Lafayette fifty pound operating pressure, they put in the same classified, we do ductile. And.
We, and we have other. We have other, uh, departments that if we needed help, we could call someone in to help out. Well. That's a whole nother story, but the, uh.
What we, we, and we have done that all, let me say, we can, some are guys not available long. We call everybody per the contract. Everybody's called, then outside, we can use anybody.
And yeah, and then you pay what you would do if you had a public works employee, you'd have to pay them out of water.
Right.
To pay them for that.
Right.
I just see, you know, the water going. I just wanna make sure that, you know? I'm just wondering, you know, we have always, yeah, if you say we can cover it, then we.
I'm not as worried about manpower as I am all the capital projects that we need to do and adding that pressure to the system. That more production, we need upgrades to our infrastructure and our plants to make that happen. And that's, I'm more worried about. The plant and the situation with upgrades and I am, manpower is not, not an issue. I, I wouldn't.
So we're not putting the cart before the horse?
No.
Nope.
I think it's a valid question, but I didn't, you know, we've looked at it and like I say, when I, was that West Lafayette for ten years? Like I say. I think long as I went up there, I went almost two years without a water break.
I wish that happened to you.
And again, and then on the scale, it's much smaller because the pressure is low, you know?
Right.
Sure.
Mark, can you, on the, when you said there's funding a request into the state and federal, is the federal, is that? Separate from the US Army Corps that's already been awarded, just under a million dollars. So what is, what is that?
So basically, it's a three million dollar request, uh, for an earmark or low, I, I think it's called. Community spending program now. It's basically.
So it's its own separate request.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's three million and that was made to, uh. Balderson's office as well as Sherrod Brown's office.
What's the state requesting for?
Uh, the state request is for five million, uh. So to work on the, the. Past commitments to OWDA that we talked about, it's five million. And then the request for the water project is nine million.
So that, yeah, so then your, your five and your three and the US Army Corps, that would about cover the whole project?
Yes. Yes, and that's what we want.
Then the village of Warsaw, those residents wouldn't have a debt reduction.
Then we, right, because whatever we can do, and if it's not, and I've said a million times, if we're not funding this project, then it's something that. I don't feel comfortable. Here feels comfortable with if we're not getting the funding.
Right.
We're not doing the project. So it's not a, it's not a secret. And we're hoping. When you make requests, like a three million dollar request to the feds, you could get one point five million. Which is better than nothing. So I mean, even if we get part, even if we get half of what we have requested, we're good. If we don't get anything. And I, I think with the state, with the fed seeing the state's bought in and that's in their budget, I think that's. When they say, okay, we're gonna help them out because it's not all coming from us. It's coming from this pool money as well. So.
So if we even still get half of the projects funded, you say federal and US Army Corps. The other portion of it will be a loan that. Will have the debt reduction on the.
Right.
Village customers to pay for that.
So the lot, right, the lot, the more, yeah, the more money we, yeah, the more money we get, the lower the debt.
Let's say right now, let's say the project, you know, is estimated eleven to twelve million dollars. You know, with the application we've submitted to O E P A, we've asked for principal forgiveness with L max out of three to four. So we feel pretty good. We should get that. So take, we'll say three off of that plus the core. Then we get three to five million out of those. So it makes it affordable project and doable for us. So those are the different funding streams, but you know, principal forgiveness, but they may take, I think they max that out now for, for man.
But when you say doable for us, are you meaning if there is a, a loan that we will pay that or?
They will have a debt reduction.
That's what I wanted to make, okay.
In simplistic terms, of first, let's say there's no grant money at all. Let's say Warsaw had to finance a twelve man. You kind of assume for every. You kind of assume for every million bar, they're gonna add a ten dollar per month for user debt reduction fee, so. If it's zero times, you know, first ten minutes out of bar, they're looking at a hundred and twenty dollar a month debt reduction, which is not doable.
Right. Right.
Plus the water.
Right, yeah, so that's where.
That's where all these different buckets need to come together to make that viable project that we all feel comfortable doing, Warsaw can afford.
I was, yeah, and I will be Monday, the twenty fourth, I'll have Sherrod Brown, Senator Brown's legislative aide here showing him the project. It's already off the committee. But he said he wants to see exactly what it is. That way if people have questions about it, then he'll be able to answer the question, so.
We had help from S P P on any of them?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Now, we're also working with going to Warsaw. They said lawyers is supportive of these folks as well. I mean, we're we're doing all this. To help out their residents because they can't afford our twenty dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a water bill, it's all right now in my area, which helps.
Right.
In that sense, that's, you know, we pull on people's. Strings as much as we can, that these folks need water up there. We have the water.
And as Mark alluded to on the project list, also Tom was broken up into two categories, maintenance and capacity. So look at those column headers, you know, you know, there's capacity projects where, for example. On Township Road one ninety two, such, those people want, but that's a capacity issue versus maintaining the plants.
Or like a Hillsdale Drive type of project. No, I think we, I think we've went to the right places and to the right people to get help and to me, it's. It's a win-win because when Shopton says we're supplying them. And we get funding for it, we can breathe knowing that we can actually pay for. And the same way with the Warsaw residents, the high. That reduction is, you know, is a hundred and fifty dollar water bill, which it's not gonna happen, but.
Not gonna happen.
We, I'm, we just can't do that. So that's why we're.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary, anything else?
I want to congratulate Tom Bartroft, who was nominated to be on the land bank. I don't know if that was last week or the week before. I go to so many meetings, so I was it last Monday or the Monday before? Yeah. So he is now part of the land bank.
What else can we get?
I don't know. Something probably. Yeah, and that's all I have. Anyone has questions, I'll answer them.
What was the recreational economy for communities report that Bob sent out on the V N?
So that is everything that kind of their whole general. I don't know how many meetings we had and then we had an in-person meeting. That is a generalization of kind of. Starting point for what everyone wants in the area. What, you know, federal state partners that you can go to 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 acquire funding. It's a pretty neat report. It's pretty lengthy, but it's it's pretty neat what. That entails and really.
You say in the area where you. Like neighboring counties?
No, just Koshakton, Shopton County, just like recreational opportunities, things that we already have, assets we already have. And then things that we want to build on or are building on for that, so. Uh, it was interesting having them here. Uh, we did, I think, three days with them in person and then there's probably about eight Zoom meetings. That led up to that, so it's a, it'll help us planning and. And funding and we've made a lot of good connections with that program as well.
Okay, nothing else. Max?
You guys are pretty well covered, really. I had.
Do you need an ordinance for the mowing contract?
I'll bring up, I guess, council this Saturday, April fifteenth, today they am with their community cleanup. You guys welcome out for that, first, if you can get a t-shirt. Uh, this will be the first year doing it without lead. So I think her and Jared kind of started this deal back. So.
Max, you said some of the last meeting about. Computers and televisions. There's a Boy Scouts.
The Boy Scouts, so.
At the fairgrounds?
Yes, libel to do that, so like, or we put ours back towards the back, they'll be out. What they call that, the older street gate, I believe.
Is there a timeframe for that?
They'll be there at the.
Had a couple of questions on that, so at least I'll be able to give an answer.
I'll be on the radio, third, two morning from nine to. And so that's. Emma, is that the United Way Director's name?
Yes.
I'm sure it will go someday, we have conversation days.
Anything else?
I don't think we covered it. Stuff I have written down to bring out. Oh, Mark, you might want to talk about that award that.
Oh, yeah, I accepted the scenic Ohio Award Friday. It's cool. If anyone's never been to the Ohio History Connection, right, the big square building in front of it, the. State Fairgrounds, it's cool. It's a, it actually is the first time I've been in that building. It's exciting to actually have a neighbor and community, Millersburg was there and talked to them and. It's exciting to, I need to bring in my, we got like a shadow box award and a big cutout, so. Put that out in the yard. Yeah. And we are scenic or scenic landscape and we have some very people watching here.
We we probably, uh. Make sure Sherrod gets some kudos.
No, no, don't say it. She said she's got it during council.
Thank you, but you don't.
Good job.
Yeah.
Deputy Sheriff, you have anything for us? So you out this morning with the. Wrecker in behind you.
Already in the last week.
Yeah.
Five this morning, five tomorrow morning. With the help of Bob Beaumont sent out. Probably fifteen layers to property owners in the last, that was last week. Give them thirty days to clean the mess up, we're gonna do it for them, though. I think America on the radio. Yeah, a lot of good things to say. A lot of people less.
Yeah. Well, we're we're gonna find out if they listen. Yeah. Right, okay.
Chief Drayer? Anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
I know you're tangling the lodging tax ordinance. Because we're gonna make another change that. Defines what lodging is to include what Sherrod, one to two. Uh, apartments?
I, yeah, I, I think we have to define. Mindy Brimms had asked that we, the county apparently has this in their ordinance from ten years ago, to define. The number of sleeping rooms. And I think it's to, you know, to, it would help address Airbnbs. I mean, any Airbnb that I'm aware of. Um, is remitting to us and I'll use Mark's, I'm not the Airbnb police, don't have time to go out there and search for those babies. But I think that's what it was, and I think if the ordinance committee, um, you know, wants to leave that information and, you know, mull it over.
Well, and Mindy, they've done a lot of work at the C V B identifying Airbnbs. It's pretty hard to get away with. Because you're, yeah, you're showing people the property, so then it's just a point of identifying. Where that property is, so they have a whole book. They've done a lot of work at C V B on identifying the properties, so.
I guess why I bring it up is we're going to table this till second meeting in May. And which time it'll come up for a third reading, so if there are people in the community that want to have. A say on this ordinance and speak to council, then they need to be aware that that is our intention to amend that lodging ordinance. To include one to sleeping rooms.
Anybody else? Okay. Sheriff Crawford, do you have anything for us? Come lurking in out of the shadows? It is beautiful.
Spring's finally here.
Warm weather.
Yeah.
This chip will go up.
No.
Good. See you in chambers.
See you in chambers.
So PM is the regular scheduled, uh, start the city council meeting. Please call the roll.
Andrew here, Barcroft.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Turner, here.
Need a motion to excuse Councilman Gross. Call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner, yes.
Stand up, flood, make them notification. My legal agents to apply to the United States of America. Into the Republic, which is paying more, on a nation under God, in the world, what liberty has to serve.
Heavenly Father, watch over all council members tonight and the city administrators. Help us realize that decisions we make affect all the citizens in the city. Do what the law keep them safe, amen. If not, I need a motion to, um, accept the minutes for March twenty seven. I'll make a motion. Moore. Andrews, call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
I'm not gonna let her that way.
Um, Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Public input.
Here again. Hi, you know me, Sherry Kirkpatrick. I'm actually here tonight as, um, the vice president of Friends of the Parks. And, um, just wanted to share a couple of thank yous. Um, we had our, um, Friends of the Parks, um, Half Marathon. And K Y K are by Koshakam Regional Medical Center on this past Saturday. And I just wanted to give a thanks to, um, the Koshakam Public Works, um, street department. For, um, closing off some street for us so the runners could be safe. Placing cones out along the T R bridge to, um, ensure that the runners have a safe lane to run in. Um, Koshakam Fire Department and Rusty, um, our guys provided track control. Out, um, their corner there at, um, seventh and Orange Street. And for Max Crown for stepping in here at the last minute and. I was trying to decide, what do I want to say? His, his stepson ride along or his faithful sign kick mark. For, um, riding along and leading the, um, leading, what's that?
He's not in the will yet.
Oh, he's not in the will, yeah.
Not yet.
Not yet. Uh, but thank you for, um, leading the, the runners, um, picking them up as they enter town and. Carrying them and making sure that they get safely through town. So. I just, um, on behalf of Friends of the Park, we appreciate the city's, um, participation and help with it.
How many, how many, uh, interests did you have?
Uh, we had race, um, race morning, we had two hundred and twenty-four pre-registered. And there was, I know ten, um, for sure that registered that morning. So it was a huge success for us and, um, don't have the final numbers in yet, but, um. I can safely say that we, um, have made more than it did last year. So I'll have more follow-up and if anybody wants to follow us on Facebook. You know, it's Friends of the Parks, it's our whole racing. So I think many of you do follow it though. Um, thank you to the city and the officers for helping us out.
I know, I know a lot of people appreciate the time and effort that you put into it, Sherry.
Thanks.
I know there's a lot that goes into it.
Thank you.
As a councilperson and a park board member, great job and well appreciated.
I love the park and I love running there, so that's why I do.
Well, there were several people from out of town, from out of state.
We had, um, including Ohio, we had eight states representing. Yeah, eight states, one from Maine, Florida, Indiana, Michigan, I can't name the other ones, but South Carolina.
The area.
Oh, yeah.
Those people came, they, or at least.
Absolutely, they did, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Public input. Are there, pull it up, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Cindy Liana, my address is four, four nine Locust.
How can we help?
Um. My husband lived there like four years. And where Fifth Street runs along with Locust right by the tracks. You guys took away his parking spot on the side. And he is now tearing his car up and our grass because we have nowhere else to park. And Third Street should be the main. Drag on the end of Locust where it should be a safety hazard. Because you have to stick your vehicle halfway out in the road just to even make sure there's nothing coming. Cause there's a big van that's on the side over here, there's cars that sit over here. I mean, you're thinking you're being able to completely halfway out.
So she came to me. About the Fifth Street situation and it was basically determined by council that you didn't want parking on Fifth Street. So I told her to come to the council meeting and it's just something that I think. The, the other, the other issue we're addressing, Third Street and Locust were addressing that situation. Parking.
Three people that park on. This street right there that. Has handicap signs.
Right.
But there's one that parks here at the end by Chestnut. That doesn't even have a handicap sign, it's not even anywhere on its license plate and it parks there throughout the day and night.
Most of the time, the car, I know the car you're talking about, there is a placard on the mirror.
Right, but there's a white vehicle that parks at the end too that does not have one. I mean, the, that, we live right there on the corner, house, there's a house right behind us. And his mom comes and parks there all the time and mostly grass and stuff. I mean, and then you've been taking away our parking spot. My husband luckily in the last two weeks has had to put his muffler back on about six different times. And he's getting ready to do it now because he's having to back out of our yard to back down the driveway to even get out and it's tearing his muffler off.
Didn't, um. Did, uh, Jeff Corning, did he make sure that everybody there had a parking, had a driveway?
We do have a driveway, but we're coming this week back and we're just to be able to get both of us to work in that. I mean.
So their house faces, if you're coming out Fifth Street and the tracks. Their house faces the Locust and it's on this corner right here. So they can't park out front. Because the stop sign is right, you can't park on that side because people park on the opposite side of the street. That live on Locust there. So their house is kind of like. Landlocked with. Where they can park and they don't have another parking spot. And I said, you know, we're, we're allowing handicap parking. I don't think, you know, to me it wasn't, it was like bring it to council. So that's why she's here is I'm like, let's, let's talk it out and see.
So what are you, uh, said you're working on that parking on Locust, is that what you just said?
You can't park on Locust because, well, across, they park across the street from their house. But those houses need that parking on Locust. So it's hard for them to park there across the street because. That's where all the, the houses across the street park.
Cindy, um, let us take a look at it. Okay, well, I'll take a look at it. Uh, mark the purpose on, uh, Fifth Street. Because we, there's a bunch of junk cars that were sitting there. And the street's not very well maintained. There's a bunch of, I think, uh, Shire said, you know, one of them needs repaved, it's that one.
Yeah, it, it does need repaved, yes, but.
But.
We were taught it was a safety hazard when we, I first heard about the whole situation.
Yeah, because when people park on that one side, it's like you're talking about, you have to stick all the way out there.
Well, see, my husband, we have a good thin backyard, so he always pulls up.
Right.
Where people can, uh, go on this street without even hitting the.
Okay, so let us take a look at it, we'll talk with the mayor and.
I think if we pushed, uh, no parking here to corner, uh. Further and maybe put, you know, see how parking goes temporarily, see what we can.
Lots of family come to the visit for us, calling it a little bit. So I mean, that's our major issue is the driveway and everything like that.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at it and I'll go bond. Did you explain to her what you were going with, um, Fourth Street, or is?
Yeah, we're, that will be a four-way, that Third Street will be a four-way stop right there. So, and then parking. It did, and then trucks came through and we got rid of that. That way the trucks weren't stopping like every block going into the pavement though. So that was way before my time probably. Actually, there was a bowl, there was a. Island in the middle of that, that Max, I mean, he came with the city. I don't remember. Way before my time.
Okay, so Cindy, we'll take a look at it and, um, we'll be in touch with you, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Hey, we have some. Additions on a table. Of an ordinance. Uh, I need a motion to table. Ordinance. Fourteen twenty-three. Or, I'm sorry, twelve twenty-three.
I need a motion.
Hold on, uh, just a second. Um, it's, it's our lodging ordinance. Um, and basically what we're going to do, we're, we're going to amend that to be more definitive of lodging groups, is that correct, Sherry? Okay, so I need a motion.
I'll make a note.
Turner, second. One, two, second. Call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner, yes.
And I will make a note that that, um. Or, or does twelve twenty- And I will make a note that that, um, ordinance twelve twenty three will have a third reading on May twenty second. And it will actually take effect July one. Additions, I need to add ordinance eighteen twenty three. Eighteen twenty three is an ordinance establishing the position of part-time income tax administrator. With said hourly rate. And nineteen twenty three is appropriations.
I'll make a motion, we add eighteen twenty three and nineteen twenty three to tonight's agenda.
Johnson, call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Michler. Oh, God. Sorry, Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes.
Good. Mayor, you have anything to add from committee?
I, I just wanna say, you know, adding to my radio appearance, just everyone needs to mow and pick up, uh, their property. Uh, no matter what neighborhood you live in, pick up after yourself. There's been a lot of people coming in town. From the outside world to look at what we have and to be a part of meetings, um. To run around town, you know, you never know what, who's gonna be here, what they're gonna see. And we just need to give that impression that we care and, and the majority of people do. Uh, but, you know, we, we just definitely need to focus, I need everyone's help and if, uh, anyone. Anyone who likes to tear our great city down, I'd invite them to cleanup day, uh, this Saturday, the fifteenth. Be at the courthouse at eight AM and use some of your energy productively. Slow down, slow down, and slow down. If you don't want people racing through your neighborhood. Then don't go racing through theirs. And it would definitely, uh, it would help the sheriff's office out, not to have to chase you around for speeding.
Good, thank you. Safety Director Max.
I don't have anything more than what we discussed in the morning.
Well, Director Council, you emailed the Well Directors Report for the month of March twenty twenty three, any questions for the Well Director? Anything to add, sir?
Yes, sir.
Honors report, you emailed the, uh, Honors Report for the month of March. Uh, if I have any questions or comments, Sherry, you have anything to add?
No, if you, if you feel comfortable proving them tonight, um, you're welcome to, if not, you know, put the next meeting's on.
I have any objections, okay, I need a motion to.
No, I'll make a motion, please, at the honor.
Andrews. So, Mark, call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes.
Sheriff's report. Sheriff Crawford, do you have anything for us?
Nothing to add other than what I emailed you, unless there's any questions.
Uh, I just showed, uh, Mayor Mills a picture I was coming through. From across the bridge yesterday, somebody was on one of those ATVs flying across the bridge with no license and things, so. Hopefully those people get licensed and they obey the laws, but then they went flying down the middle of town on Main Street as well.
Yeah, anyone, uh.
Anyone who's driving without a city permit needs to be ticketed, please, thank you.
Yep. Just the season.
Yeah. Warmer weather comes more mischief.
Right. Mr. President, I, um, also mailed council members the jet reports on behalf of the announced, um. For, for her underneath her treasure report. If there's any questions, I can, I can answer those or you can all emails the announced right away.
Thank you. Deputy Sheriff, anything to add?
No, sir.
No, it's that, son.
How can I?
For Kate Dry, you have anything to add?
Yes, any additional from the committee?
Uh, Chief Dryer?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, the legislation, first reading. I'll ask the clerk to give a first reading of ordinance eighteen twenty three, which will need to take its course.
An ordinance establishing the position of part-time insurance tax administrator and said hourly rate.
For the first reading of ordinance eighteen twenty three, any questions or comments?
Make a motion, goes, well, the bounds are.
It's okay. And we, the ordinance eighteen twenty three will take its course. Okay, get ready, Chad.
Okay.
You're on now.
All right.
Okay, first reading. I'll ask the clerk to give the first reading of ordinance nineteen twenty three.
Appropriation.
For the first reading of ordinance nineteen twenty three, any questions or comments?
Make a motion, suspend, go to the third reading.
I'll say, I'll say, Moore.
Call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes. Price.
Yes. He wrote nine. Clerk, please give a third reading of ordinance nineteen twenty three.
Appropriation.
Questions or comments? The question is, should nineteen, ordinance nineteen twenty three pass? Call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes.
Ordinance nineteen twenty three is passed. Second reading. These need to be passed. I'll ask the clerk to give a second reading of ordinance fifteen twenty three.
In ordinance to amend ordinance fifty seven twenty one for the position of public works assistant director and utilities director.
For the second reading of ordinance fifteen twenty three, are there any questions or comments?
I need a motion to suspend the rules that are directed to the third reading.
I'm sorry, Johnson, call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes.
Clerk, please give a third reading of ordinance fifteen twenty three.
An ordinance to amend ordinance fifty seven dash twenty one for the position of public works assistant director and utilities director.
But the addition of ordinance fifteen twenty three pass, clerk, please, call the roll.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes.
Ordinance fifteen twenty three is passed. Second reading needs to pass as well, I'll ask the clerk to give the second reading of ordinance sixteen twenty three.
Transfer.
For the second reading of ordinance sixteen twenty three, any questions or comments? If not, I need a motion to suspend the rules, go directly to the third reading.
Make a motion to suspend the rules, go to the third reading, sixteen twenty three.
Second.
Andrew, call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes.
Questions? Clerk, please give a third reading of ordinance sixteen twenty three.
Transfer.
Some questions or comments? Question is, should ordinance sixteen twenty three pass? Call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes.
Ordinance fifteen twenty three is passed. Clerk, you give a second reading, this one needs to pass as well, second reading of ordinance seventeen twenty three.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor or service director to prepare specifications advertised and led a bit for. Fluorine, fluoride, alum, lime, CO2, sodium hexamethaphosphate, and gasoline.
For the second reading of ordinance seventeen twenty three, any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and go to a third reading, Johnson.
Second.
Andrews. Call the roll please.
Andrews, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes.
Clerk, please give a third reading of seventeen twenty three.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor or service director to prepare specifications advertised and led a bit with fluorine, fluoride, alum, lime, CO2, sodium hexamethaphosphate, and gasoline.
Any questions or comments? The question is, should ordinance seventeen twenty three pass? Call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes.
Ordinance seventeen twenty three is passed. There's only various, we don't have an ordinance for that, is that right, Mr. Stelter?
Yes.
Pass on that. Any other, anything from communications? Okay, first one's a date time for next meeting.
April twenty fourth, seven o'clock, committee meeting.
Need a motion for the meeting to adjourn?
A move.
More. Barcroft. Call the roll please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Price.
Yeah.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner. Yes.